Thank you, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our presentation of colors tonight is from North Buncombe High School and they are instructed by Captain James Sullivan. Please rise.
Carrie, cut. Ready, cut. Kelly, halt. Left, face. Present, Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, Kelly. Ready, cut. Right, face. Forward, march. Case, Kelly.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. We are going to amend the agenda tonight to include the pool replacement power service easement and with that change, I would entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda with that change.
Thank you very much, can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The superintendent's comments.
Good afternoon, everyone, or evening, I should say. Last Wednesday, we honored our annual teachers at the Annual Teacher of the Year banquet and I want to congratulate first all forty-three of our individual schools' Teachers of the Year, the seven district winners, our Ruth Henderson Award recipient, very special honor that's presented every year, and it was Brandy Fleckenstein that was the recipient of that award, and very proud of Brandy, and finally, to Elizabeth Love from A.C. Reynolds High School, who is our 2017-2018 Buncombe County Schools Teacher of the Year. Beth is a master teacher, I wanted to take credit in hiring her, but I don't think I did, I think that was Dr. Lambert, she's a master teacher in the area of English Language Arts and she will be an excellent representative for all Buncombe County Schools as she proceeds on in state competition, so congratulations to Beth. As you know, we are currently rolling out one-to-one computer devices to our high school students this year in the grades ten through twelve, and one area of concerns that many of our schools have had is the opportunity to allow students to take those devices home after school and a concern for those percentage of homes that may not have access to the Internet. So I'm very excited to announce that thanks to a grant from Sprint's One Million Project, high school students who do not have home access can now obtain from their school a homework hotspot and that will allow this school-issued device to connect to the Sprint network and this particular grant will provide the hotspots and service at no cost to Buncombe County Schools or the families for at least five years. So the hotspots are configured to work only with a student's school-issued device and it maintains our district's content restrictions and I know it would be no other way with Mr. Barry Pace, our technology director, so, and thanks to him for all of his work. That's, I think that's an incredible achievement and it levels the playing field because I think as we continue to move into the digital instructional age that that's going to be extremely important. Last month, we received at North Buncombe High School an objection under Policy 3210 and that was the use of a supplemental text, it was being used in eleventh grade honors English classroom and I want to thank Dr. Cersei and I see that she's here tonight and please, on our behalf, I want you to thank the school's MTAC Committee for conducting the review in such a timely manner, the decision and then the subsequent recommendation from the committee was that that particular book, The Bluest Eye, will no longer be used as an instructional material for eleventh grade English courses at any academic achievement level and primarily, we have standard honors or advanced placement. And the committee, however, in closing, they provided, which is a non-binding opinion or suggestion, that the book could be considered for possible use as an instructional resource at the twelfth grade level for advanced placement. And I do want to add, Dr. Cersei contacted me late this afternoon and again, part of this process, and it's all about the process, she met with her entire English department today, provided that decision from the MTAC Committee, they discussed the potential for an alternate text to be used and they're in the process of identifying that, but in that discussion, the entire department, along with the administration, have opted to use a substitute text for all grade levels in that particular standard, so that is the decision that's final, that is made with the department and the school, as certainly it should be. I want to say this, though, that I think it's so valuable to recognize the policy because I think it's a process that supports first, it allows students and parents an opportunity to either opt out for a substitute of a particular text or resource, but on the other hand, it also allows an objection to any initial selection, so it offers both. This is the second book challenge in recent memory for me as a superintendent and I believe in both cases, I go back to the local committees at that school, both of those schools that gave the process very fair and due process coming to their decision, and I also think it's very important to recognize the importance for all stakeholders to give quality time to carefully read. The course syllabus is that we take quite a bit of time to provide, usually in the first week, no later than the first week of courses, I know that's true for our high school and middle schools and even at our elementary schools, Brian, I think that's very true. So it's important to look at those course syllabuses, parents, stakeholders, students, and I think by doing that, it really maximizes the value of what I think is an extremely good policy and that is Policy 3210. So again, Dr. Cersei, please pass that on to the committee, job well done. In closing, I would like to propose to the board that we participate in an afternoon work session at our November, our next November board meeting. What I'd like to do is to review and discuss the potential house, potential impact of House Bill thirteen, and you may recall that, that is the K3 legislation regarding class size restrictions for kindergarten through third grade, and while we received, I think you're aware, we had a compromise for that implementation this year, we were basically given one year of a more of a minimum type of impact, that next year, it is set to fully implement, 2018 and 19. And as you may recall, there were two central issues to this implementation and they were focused on funding our enhancement teachers in the areas of music, art, oral language and physical education at the elementary level. And then the second factor, which is also very critical, was the issue of facility space. As you add additional classrooms, where do they go, and then the potential increase that we and other systems across the state could find ourselves in. So I think that's a very important focus that we need to begin early this school year and have considerable discussion. I think we're in an advantage now that we have our new numbers, so we're able to project more accurately what the impact will be, and I also think it's a very important conversation to have and present to the public, so I would like to ask, Madam Chair, if we could look at an afternoon work session in November.
And I believe that date is November the ninth, correct? That's a change, from November the second to November the ninth. All right, thank.
Can I get one more thing?
Sure.
Just forgot about this, is Mrs. Frisbee here? Yes, she's up there. I just want to recognize her and the finance department payroll and Ms. Lopez, Human Resources, I know you were involved. We launched today, brand-new software on, that impacts the financial management of our school district, it has been much, much needed, it is going to allow us to talk together across all departments in the future like we never had opportunities to do so before, so it's very important. Also want to thank all employees, a number of those sitting here, and just thank you for your assistance with that because it did add, it did require a new sign-in, sign-out, so in fact, I've got for mine myself to sign out today, but we'll get there, we'll get there, Ms. Frisbee, but thank you for all the work and we're excited about this. And that does conclude my comments.
Madam Chair, is the, just the work session is on the ninth or also the meeting?
No, 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 all the meeting in November, will be on November the ninth as opposed to the second. Okay. It's our good news section. We'll ask Ms. Stacia Harris to come.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have some special recognitions to talk about today, we have some twenty years, some thirty years, and one very special fifty-year employee. So first up, I want my twenty years to get ready, when I call your name, I want you to come down, get your certificate from Ben, and come stand next to me. First up, Amy McElreith. She works in the front office at Estes Elementary, when she came here, I asked her what she taught, she said, "I teach a lot of things." Is up next, he teaches at North Windy Ridge Intermediate, he is a Title I reading coach. Give him a round of applause. Teaches at Black Mountain Primary, she is a second-grade teacher, give her a round of applause. Teaches at Chandler Elementary, she teaches kindergarten. Out our twenty years is Ms. Debbie Bryant, she teaches, she's up here at central office, she is the Healthful Living Coordinator, give her a round of applause. So I'm going to ask you guys, it's time, in case you're not familiar, we like to ask everyone a pure question, if you've been teaching for twenty, thirty, or even fifty years, we want to know, what's your secret and what keeps you going every day? So I'm going to ask you a question, I'm going to hand you the mic and just repeat your name and pass it down and hold the mic about right here. All right, so the question tonight is, what is your why?
Okay, I'm Amy McElreith, my why, I guess, would be the kids. I was out of the school for two years when we lived in Greensboro and I was in the central office and I miss the kids.
My name is Jeremy Ayton, Title I at North Windy Ridge, and my why is just getting the chance to work with the students with improving their reading each and every day.
I'm Patricia Brzezinski and teach second grade at Black Mountain Primary, and my why is definitely the kids, helping them discover their love of learning and love of reading.
My name is Jennifer Brummett and I work in kindergarten at Chandler Elementary, and my why is just the love of the children and making a difference.
Hi, you're probably thinking, she looks a lot older than only being in here for twenty years, right? Well, I am, I'm actually starting my thirty-fiftieth year this, this, this school year, so I've been in North Carolina and Buncombe County for twenty years, so my why is probably because you can't spell hope without P.E. and that's what we do here, so P.E., you can't have hope, if you don't have hope, you don't really have anything else, so that's one reason that we try to do that with our students, giving them that inspiration to live a better, healthy life, so.
Awesome. Good group picture. And just smile at Tim, keep on smiling. Quality control, awesome, thanks, guys.
What's his name?
And for our thirty-year recognition, if Mr. Rickett is ready, first up, Ms. Christie Cheek, she is our CTE Director here at Central Office. Kathy Marlowe, she is in curriculum, she is a health educator. Donna Sluter, she's also up here at Central Office, she is an elementary instructional Anik is at W.D. Williams Elementary, she is a speech therapist. Ms. Gretchen Barkowitz, she is at Estes Elementary, she is a third-grade teacher. And so, only because Ms. Sluter is up here, I'm going to ask you guys the same question because she asked me when she came in, she's like, "Do I have to talk?" I was like, "Yes, you have to talk, you've been here thirty years," so same question, ladies, what is your why? And try to hold the mic right here.
So if you've heard me talk at board meetings forever, you know my why, my why is certainly promoting opportunities for our students and that certainly is why I do this job every day.
My name is Kathy Marlowe and I taught at Reynolds High School for thirty years, recently took a job at the central office in Healthful Living and Reproduct, or Healthful Living and my why is because I love the kids and I have a five-and-year, a five-and-a-half-year-old at home that I'm going to have to work to a hundred to put him through college.
I'm Ladonna Sluter, I'm an instructional coach at Avery's Creek Elementary and Glen Arden Elementary, yay! And my why is also to just have an impact on everyone that I encounter every day, teachers, children, administration and my colleagues, I did it.
Hi, I'm Kim Yannick and I'm a speech-language pathologist at Williams Elementary and I've been at Williams my entire thirty years and I think that the reason why I've stuck it out is because I love that community and the kids that are there, just a special place to be.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Barkowitz, I teach third grade and mine is a love of the children and trying to make some type of positive influence in their life. Thank you.
Smile at Tim.
All right, one, two, three.
Pretend it's the Oscars, just keep on smiling. We got to check it, quality control? Perfect, thank you all. We have a very, very special recognition to bring you guys today, we have an employee who is a fifty-year employee, so I'm not going to tell you all about her, I'm going to invite Mr. Fusco down here to tell us a little bit about Carol Buckner, she works at Oakley Elementary. Also, would Mr. Plemons join me? Mr. Benigno and Mr. Chandler, come on down.
This is, Ms. Buckner is such a humble, amazingly humble individual, and you'll learn this through this experience, that this is such an honor for me to be able to speak, but she would not want to be here, I know this, I had, gave Ms. Buckner a heads-up the other day, actually Friday, and so you can't take today off, you have to, you have to work today, but we love Ms. Buckner, I do have some things to share with you about her. Ms. Buckner is the epitome of institutional knowledge for Oakley Elementary School community. Absolutely. When Ms. Buckner started at Oakley, the school was first through eighth grade, she was the first full-time secretary at the school and the teachers had no assistants, there were thirty-five to forty students in some classes, she did all the photocopying with duplicators, ditto machines, when you get all the purple on them, if those who remember to get all the purple on them on your hands, that was Ms. Buckner, used those with the mimeograph machines and manual typewriter was used, there were no computers at that time, Ms. Buckner, I can't, wow, I'm forty-one years old, you know, and I'll tell you what, Ms. Buckner, being, working at Oakley that long is just amazing to so many of us. The principal that hired Ms. Buckner was Ms. Mary Long, she was the first and only female principal in the county at that time, Ms. Buckner shared with me, very interesting. There was no child nutrition, everything was planned within the school, she managed the cafeteria finances as well, on her own, amazing. She absolutely loves her job, when she was in college, her mother begged her to be a teacher, Ms. Buckner shared with me, she took business education at Mars Hill College and just loved being a part of the school, so the head secretary role was just an absolute dream job for Ms. Buckner. Also, I'll share with you, she's worked for twelve principals in her time at Oakley. She maintains index cards of students who are alumni of Oakley Elementary and can identify students from her first years at Oakley Elementary. My first year at Oakley, Ms. Buckner went into the storage closet and came out with index cards and she was able to show me alumni from nineteen eighty-four, from nineteen seventy-six, so on and so forth, absolutely, absolutely amazed me. When coming to Oakley, this young principal named Fusco learned many amazing lessons from Ms. Buckner's history of Oakley file, I learned, for example, A.C. Reynolds was the past, was a past principal of Oakley during the nineteen forties, and he built a cannery as a part of the school to allow community members to can their goods during the time of ration stamps, during the World War II period of time, and Ms. Buckner wasn't at Oakley during that period of time. But Ms. Buckner maintains that level of community history. There are people in our community who are interwoven with a fabric within our community and Ms. Buckner is absolutely one of those. Her husband, and I, could her husband and family and friends stand, because there are many here tonight who've come to honor her. Invited, Mr. Plemons as well to come tonight and honor Ms. Buckner.
Thank you. I can talk all night about Carol Buckner, but I will spare you most of that, she, when I first came to Oakley, I walked in the office and I had the warmth and professionalism more than any place I'd ever been in the schools, and I was privileged to work at the Buncombe County Schools for many years. She was a friend, she was a professional, she has a beautiful family that supports her entirely, she is on time, efficient, personable, and she paid me one of the nicest compliments I've ever had in my life, and she said, when I started talking a little bit about retirement, she said, "Well, I wish you wouldn't go," and I said, "Well, you've been covering me on some report, I don't know what it is, for so long," and I said, she said, "Well, if you'll stay, I'll keep covering you then." She's the most professional person I have ever known in Oakley School, without a doubt, is Ms. Oakley, but not only Ms. Oakley School, Ms. Oakley Community, and I'm so proud to have been a part of the Oakley Community for so many years and especially Carol Buckner.
Brian Chandler, I was privileged and honored to be the principal for six years at Oakley and walked in, I've told many times that, when I walked in as a teacher in third grade at North Buncombe Elementary, that my assistant, we had full-time assistants back then, in third grade, and I learned everything I knew, that I know about teaching from my third-grade assistant, Mary Lynn Wild, who is now retired, but when I walked into Oakley Elementary as principal, I learned everything about being a principal from Ms. Carol Buckner. She taught me about payroll, she taught me about being organized, which hasn't helped much, if you've seen my desk, but she is everything that these two gentlemen have said and more, I've never worked around anyone that is so loyal and so humble, and she is a light to everyone around her in her community, she is a light, she lives her life, I talk, when I teach Sunday School at my church, I talk about, most of us are in the ninety-nine percent that we fail all the time, and then there's that one percent, like my mother-in-law and Ms. Buckner, is wonderful, she makes Oakley School and that Oakley Community everything that it is, and she's, she was my best friend at Oakley and I could trust her with anything that I've ever given her or any secret that I've ever had, and I love you dearly and you are awesome and I want to be like you.
My name is Michael Benigno and I preceded Mr. Fusco as principal of Oakley Elementary, and many of the things that the gentlemen have said, we could say again, Ms. Buckner is an incredible, amazing lady, but I think maybe what touched me the most for the time that I was at Oakley was just how much of an example, how much of an inspiration and how much she made me a better person because of who she was, and I think anybody who's had a moment to be with Ms. Buckner, anybody who's had time to spend with Carol, has felt the same way, you make people better because of who you are, Ms. Buckner, and we can't thank you enough for doing that for all of us and for all the people whose lives you've touched at Oakley Elementary, in the community, and here in Buncombe County Schools, thank you for who you are.
So Ms. Buckner, how do you feel right now? What was it like having all of your former principals stand up here and talk about what it was like to work with you?
I feel honored, very honored.
So fifty years, I would ask you your why, but you've cheated because you already know what your answer is going to be, so simply tell us, what is the secret to getting up every day and coming to work fifty years in the same location, tell me, what is it that you love and what keeps you coming back?
I just love my job, I love the children, I love the staff, we've had wonderful staff throughout the years and the whole community is just, I just love it.
And do you have an advice for folks who are maybe just starting their career working at a school?
Just look for the positive, don't look for the negative, because there's a lot of positive things out there.
Very well said, all right, everyone, give her a round of applause. Very special to present to Ms. Buckner, Mr. Fusco will do the honors.
For Buncombe County Schools, preparing students for their tomorrow commitment to the school.
Carol Buckner, fifty years of service and recognition and appreciation of your dedication to Buncombe County Schools.
to Buncombe County Schools.
Favorite part, we're going to take some group pictures. So, Ms. Buckner, you have a lot of things, you want me to hold the certificate for you? Okay. Okay, so let's start, let's have you guys get together for a quick picture. And Dr. B., and Ms. Franklin, Ms. McMahon, if you guys could get ready. It's time, it's time for the group photo. Feel good, you got it?
I just want to know how she's done 12 firsts.
Everyone look at Tim and squish real close together. Want to get in the picture? Do you want to come in? Are you her husband? Come on down. We're getting the husband involved, come on. Oh, it's you, Tim. We're besties, everybody. Squish it in. Quality check, quality control. We got it? And Madam Chair, that concludes good news for the evening.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, we were just starting with the good news, I got excited.
And the next item on the agenda is good news. I always want to say good news, chair, it's a common. You know, we didn't tell the board about Lieutenant's heart attack. Look at that little dress. That's the whole Oakley community that just went out here. Danny, does she ever say, "Now, so-and-so used to do that, and that wasn't a good thing." The next item on the agenda is good news, Ms. Swanger.
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, board members, the BCS Finance Department was recently awarded recognitions from two separate agencies for their excellence in financial reporting. This honor is bestowed upon finance teams that go above and beyond the normal requirements to promote transparency and efficiency. Our finance team is committed to financial integrity and high-quality financial reporting. I would like to invite the finance team to stand, and I would like our CFO, Ms. Deborah Frisbee, to please come down and let us thank you for your wonderful award and all of your hard work.
I'm bringing them all.
I just want this finance team to know that I always accuse Ms. Frisbee of going to the back, and she has the longest way to walk down, and you can confirm that tonight.
This award would not be possible without my finance team. Not everyone is here, some others had previous obligations, and some may still be working across the hall. So it was a busy week this week, but I'm truly honored to have such a great team to work with, and this is a collaborative effort, it's a joint effort, takes a lot of time, but we are honored to receive this, and thank you to the Madam Chair and the board for your recognition.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Watch them, they get their award and they leave. All right, Ms. Swanger, it's time for the curriculum feature.
Tonight, Mr. Airwood will share the results of our overall school accountability model results from 2016-17. Measures, and you will also see our disappointments and our challenges. I can assure you that Dr. Baldwin, the curriculum department, school administrators, who many of them are here this evening, have locked arms and there is a laser-like focus this year on teaching the North Carolina content standards with rigor and high expectations. School administrators have already attended several content area sessions, they're disaggregating the data, and they're making plans. Principals have created professional development plans and goals, personal goals, with strategies to grow all students in both proficiency at the state level and growth. On Monday, every teacher in Buncombe County will participate in high-quality professional development. The elementary and intermediate schools will have professional development at their schools, so it will be school-based, and our secondary folks will all be spread out, but mostly in the Reynolds community, and our team of specialists, teacher leaders, and content experts will facilitate over 120 content-specific training sessions that teachers will get to choose from in the secondary level. It is our belief that if all teachers will teach content and grade-level standards with high level of rigor, all students will grow, meet, and exceed proficiency levels. So for the snapshot on the year in review, so we can move on to 17-18, we need to put 16-17 away, Mr. Airwood's going to do that for us now.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, I do want to present the autopsy data for the last school year, the 2016-17 school year. First, we'd like to start with, who exactly do we report our data to? And we are required to report our data to both the state and the federal government. And the measures that each requires are a little bit different. So with the state, we typically see, that's where our school performance grade comes in, which we measure is 80% of achievement, which is proficiency on our test, and 20% growth. Now, some of the other indicators that we use in our data is the ACT, work keys, math course rigor, and the cohort graduation rate. Those are high school measures, and then for all schools, we measure their performance, which is measured in grade-level proficiency, which would be their levels, threes, fours, and fives. Now, the federal side, we've kind of been in a transition between no child left behind, and now, starting this year, we're under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, which, like I say, we're participating in this year, even though we won't find out if the federal government approves it until probably January. But the indicators that the federal government has been asking us to keep up with for the last couple of years is just participation, making sure we test 95% of all of our students in each subgroup. Now, the federal government has only historically accepted fours and fives for our reporting purposes, which is what we call college and career-ready. Now, last year, looking at the grades, this is the overall grades, Buncombe County had 37 of its 42 schools receive a grade of C or better. We did have two schools that received an A, early college and discovery. 17 of our schools received a B, and you can see the comparison to the state as well. 18 schools received a D, and we did have five schools that received a D, excuse me, 18 schools received a C, five schools received a D this year. Okay? Now, looking and breaking down that grade, we have the two components, growth, which is what I'm going to cover first, and then proficiency. For growth, we had 27 schools met or exceeded expected growth this year. Of course, we had nine schools that exceeded. And I do want to point out, two of those schools, M.L. Elementary, has exceeded growth for four consecutive years, and Valley Springs Middle School has exceeded growth for five consecutive years. That's a tremendous achievement. 18 of our schools met expected growth, and they're listed there. 15 of our schools did not meet growth. Of course, you can see them listed there as well. I wanted to show you how we use growth, and this is a screenshot from EVOS, which shows a historical picture of the last three years based on growth of each of our grade levels. So this is on a macro scale, looking at the district level. Red is an indication of grades and subjects that did not meet growth, green indicates where we met growth, and blue represents areas where we have exceeded growth. We use this data to pinpoint where we need to target our improvement. Okay? So this is an example from reading, and then this would be an example from math. So from this, we can track trends, and we can look and see where adjustments need to be made in instruction. This is our science, and as you can see, I like to point out, our fifth-grade science has really been a tremendous performer. We've done some great things with fifth-grade science. And finally, we have our three English measures, biology, English II, and math I. Now, that was the 20% part, and I have a reason for starting with the 20% part, why growth. We emphasize growth, okay, and I'm going to show you why in just a few slides. But this is the 80% part, this is the achievement, and you can see where Buncombe County's achievement for grade level, again, that's the state side, and where we compare to the North Carolina measure. And then under that, the college and career-ready is how we report to the federal government, and then also how we compare with the state. So, the question that we want to ask is, what exactly do school performance grades really measure? Okay? So when we say a school is a such-and-such school, what does that really say? And what we have here is a graph, that every dot on there is a North Carolina public school. The red dots represent Buncombe County public schools. And what we have on the bottom is the economically disadvantaged students, in other words, the percent of free and reduced lunch students at a school, and on the left, the achievement, that's the proficiency on the exams. And what we clearly see, it's very highly correlated that as the free and reduced lunch rate goes up at a school, the achievement goes down. Okay? And it's very highly correlated, even more so for reading, as we see here, just a lot tighter. But this slide is the reason that Dr. Baldwin has argued that it needs to be a 50-50 model, because we have the same free and reduced lunch rate across the bottom, but now we're measuring that against growth. And as you can see, there is absolutely no correlation between socioeconomic status and growth. What that means is, we can grow all of our students, okay, regardless of their backgrounds. Okay? So that's why we have to own the growth. Okay? Now, switching gears, and we're looking at the federal side, that's all the state model we just saw, but the federal side, again, the one thing they're looking at is, are you testing all of your students? And as you can see, Buncombe County met 86 of its 88 participation targets. We missed two targets by a total of three students. Okay? Three students is what that represents. So I can say, we are testing our students. Okay? Now, those subgroups that we have to test, and all, these are all the subgroups that Buncombe County has, so I'd like you to look at those. Now, the rules that apply to that, there are consequences for the schools that do not meet those targets, and this applies to our performance composite, i.e. our EOG and EOC test, ACT, ACT work keys. All right? And to have a subgroup, a school has to have 30 students in each of those identifiable groups. So the consequence for not meeting a participation target in, for the first year, is a parent notification. These schools have sent a letter home to the parents indicating that we did not meet that rate, and what we plan to make sure we meet it for the next school year. For the second year, if you miss the same target for two years in a row, the school has to develop an intensive intervention plan, and they are labeled consistently though participating school. Okay? And Community High School and North Buncombe are at present developing those plans. And keep in mind, we're talking about one and two and three students, okay, that we're missing by. We're not missing by a large number of students. So, switching gears and looking at some of our other performance indicators, I would argue that this is probably the most important indicator we can have, because this is the final measure of what Buncombe County Schools do, and that's the cohort graduation rate. And as you can see, we've been measuring the rate in this manner, the same manner, since 2006. And what we're looking at is, the North Carolina and Buncombe County have both tracked very similarly over that time. For this past year, Buncombe County Schools graduated 88.3% of its students in that four-year period, from the time they entered ninth grade. So, and that's about a 2.5% improvement from the previous year. A lot of work goes into that. We've also, since 2012, have required all of our 11th grade students to take the ACT, excuse me, and you can see the performance there. We were a little concerned, we'd have a dip in our ACT scores, but for the past year, it went up. Okay? And what we're looking at here is the composite score, the average composite score. To put that in reference, to attend a UNC system school, you have to have a minimum composite score of a 17. Okay? So our school, our students are tracking above that, on average. And I have no idea why that happened. Okay? All right. All right, okay, there we go. AP scores, this is another, we have a lot of longitudinal data to track what we've been doing in terms of AP. This first slide shows the total number of students that took at least one AP exam. And as you can see, historically, it is tracked up, but over the last few years, that it's kind of flattened out or declined. I know it says, okay, well, what's going on? That's not a negative, because what we have now are more avenues for students to earn college credit while in high school. So we have a significant number of our students that are earning credits through AB Tech. So that certainly is having an impact on that. So again, a metric I think we're going to need to track is the number of students earning college credit. Okay? I apologize, this did not do this when I rehearsed today. This looks at the total number of grades. A number of our students take more than one AP course in a year. So this is what this is indicating, as you can see, that also has tracked up pretty dramatically over the years. And finally, we're looking And finally, we're looking at the number of students that score a three or better. And the reason that's significant, a three is typically the score that a college will award a college credit, if a student scores that three. And you can see how we've tracked, along with North Carolina, and a global over the years. Okay? So, how do we use the data? And this is the critical piece. If we don't use it, then there's really no need in collecting it. So what we do, and we do this from the macro level, right down to that individual PLC, we use a data analysis sequence model. That's a fancy way of saying, we look at our data, we look and try to figure out, why is the data what it is? We adjust our instruction to compensate for what our data is, and then we measure again. Again, we do it at the district level, which is what we're doing here, but every school is doing it within their PLCs in live time, so that they can make corrections in instruction immediately, instead of waiting until the end of the year. We align our school improvement goals to identified needs. We certainly want to address those. At the end of this month, 1st of November, teacher and principal effectiveness ratings will come out, and we'll examine that, to see, where do we need to support our principals and our teachers? Targeted professional development. We have very limited dollars for professional development. We've got to spend them wisely. We need to spend them on areas where we need to focus. We address our learning targets, which are based on the North Carolina standards, using high-impact strategies that are developed and implemented within our PLCs. And finally, we use our instructional coaches to address those identified needs that we have. So I want to take a minute, and I talked about ESSA that we're under this year. What changes under ESSA for this coming year? Well, number one, the General Assembly passed a bill that says that our North Carolina school performance grades must match the ESSA requirements. So instead of having that dual accountability model, we'll now have a single accountability model. ESSA places a much more, a higher emphasis on the learning of English language learners. They now, their performance and their progress will now become part of the school performance grade, as an added indicator. With that, and how we do that, how we track their progress, EL students used to have some of their tests exempted. They didn't have to take them. They will now take all tests. Okay? I would argue the next bullet is probably the most significant change that's going to take place. And that's, we will now be providing grades, like we do for schools, for every individual subgroup, based on their achievement and growth. Now, that's going to be important, because that will become the new way we identify our comprehensive support and targeted support schools. We have different names, called focused schools now. Okay?
We don't assign grades to our schools. The state of North Carolina does that, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
That's, I don't think that was what you said. I just want to be clear with that.
I'm sorry.
We don't do that. We do the testing, we provide results, but labeling comes from the state of North Carolina.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One of the things that I advocated for very strongly and have been for years is the elimination of double testing at eighth grade. And what this is, is students who are enrolled in math I had to take the math I EOC and the math VIII EOG. Now, they will only take one or the other, not both. And I think that's absolutely the right thing to do.
So who makes that choice?
We made that choice when we were writing the ESSA plan. And when I say "we," I'm talking about the state of North Carolina. And that was, that was one of the decisions that was made, and I think that was a very short, a lot of support among superintendents to make that happen. Okay? With that, because we have to have a measure at high school, since we're no longer going to use the math I at middle school for that measure, math III will now become an EOC. Okay? And that also results in the elimination of using bank scores from the middle school for the high school proficiency, which I think is the right thing to do as well. It's transparent, it's what happens at that school, not what happened at another school. Okay? Long-term goals will be established by school. I think we all remember No Child Left Behind, that said by 2014, every student would be proficient. I think we all recognize that was not realistic. We now have, and I would argue that even the waiver that North Carolina had was not realistic either. These goals are realistic, because now they're developed by school. Each school will have to improve their subgroups by a set amount. So if you're a high-performing school, you still have to improve, which was not the case under the waiver that North Carolina had with No Child Left Behind. All right? So I think this is very reasonable. And finally, we have new participation consequences for those schools that do not test the 95%. Now, what doesn't change under ESSA is the 80-20 breakdown between achievement and growth. That remains. And the other thing that doesn't change is the 15-point grading scale, which is part of the budget amendment, or the budget law this year, that will remain for 17, 18, 18, 19, and then we have to see what happens after that. Finally, if you have one of those really sleepless nights, you just cannot get to sleep, I encourage you to go to one of these sites, pull up some of these spreadsheets, I guarantee you will be cured. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I actually understood this year.
You know, that's always my goal.
Ms. Swanger, do we have other comments, or?
We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? I hear one.
I got several. Do we have time?
Sure.
I'm confused, and I don't mean that to slight you, Madam Chair.
No, it's just taken me three years to get it, so.
I've been sitting on a chair up here for 12 years now, almost 12, 11 years, and I'm confused. Help me understand how we measure growth in our high schools.
That's been my goal this year, because a lot of people have heard it, is having us understand. And I want to reference that. I've been listening to the debate of some, and I've served Representative Horn and some others, and how they just absolutely butcher how growth is measured, you know, when they're talking. So this is not something our General Assembly understands. But essentially, and this is the essential way we measure growth at every grade level. Students are grouped into five groups based on their academic performance over the years. So every test a student's ever taken factors into what group they're placed in. So you'll have a low-performing group, a low-middle, middle, high-middle, and a high group. Within those groups, those are the students that are being compared, and you're comparing their academic progress. So based on what they scored previously, and what they scored on, say, biology, math I, or English II, they measure that performance, that progress. That average progress becomes what we call the growth standard. So that's the standard we're expecting students to meet. So students that exceed that growth standard, they would be considered, they exceeded growth. If you didn't make the growth standard, you didn't make that much progress, then you did not meet growth. All right? So when you're looking at it from a school or a teacher standpoint, you take all of your students that fit to that school or that teacher, and you're measuring their overall growth. Okay? So it's like a cumulative effect.
Let me ask the question in another way. How in the world do you have a high school that scores an A and doesn't meet growth?
There are three, there are three EOCs that high schools participate in: biology, English II, and math I. And that school did not meet biology for their top-level students. They did not exceed growth in biology.
But with the 80-20, achievement versus growth, if their achievement is high, even if their growth is not high, they could still make an A, in other words.
Because the 80% is the achievement.
Yeah.
It dominates the grade.
Right. Good question.
Well, if I'm sitting in the public, that doesn't make any sense to me. If I'm concerned about my kids and where they're going to school, and where I'm going to buy a house, when I locate the Buncombe County or wherever, it doesn't make sense to me. It does not make sense to me. But I've, let me go to my next question, if I might. May I continue?
Of course.
So you touched a little bit, but what are the determining factors, or the determinant factors, that we're using to measure growth? So it's based on a test score from perhaps the year before, maybe two years before, maybe the middle school to the high school? And that growth is based upon that one indicator for that one day, 365, 7, what's next? 740, 20, 30, 40 days later, whatever it is? That's how you're measuring growth? Not you, but that's how the state is, the charge that the state is giving us to measure growth.
Correct. It's a comparison to every other like student in the state. You're measuring their progress versus the progress of every other student in the state.
And what are you?
Like them.
And what are you using, or are we using anything in collecting this data for control? Because my graduate-level research class, the one thing I remember from that, if you don't have some control somewhere, you're not, you're not comparing apples to apples. You're not looking at valid data. And so I, my question is, here's the reason for it. Number one, I have a problem with what the state has said. But number two, what I hope we don't do as a school system, we've got a heck of a lot of good things going on in this school system, a lot. And I would, I don't want to see us get bogged down in this, and teach to the test, and forget about all the things that are going on with Christie Cheek, and Debbie Bryant, and our band people, and our art people, and our elementary schools are labeled with a grade, and we don't start testing till we win? Third?
Third grade.
So what about what's going on in kindergarten and first and second? It's just, it's ludicrous to me. I just, I ask questions, I do this every year, I still don't understand it, and I know I'm not very bright, but I just don't want us, as a school system, to get too bogged down into this, into the weeds, and forget about all of the good things that are going on with our kids and these people that are sitting in the audience today that spend hours and hours and hours. They're here tonight! We're not doing anything for them tonight. They're here because they care. And I just, that's my fear, is that we get too far down and bogged into this. The data, I understand we have to look at it, I know, I get it, I get it, but the last thing I'll say to this, I spent 20 years of my life coaching college basketball, and Tony Baldwin was a college basketball coach. And if Tony Baldwin and I are coaching the same kids, and it's a tie game, and we run the same play for the same player, and we get the same player open, and my player, one time, jumps up and makes that shot, and we win by a deuce, and he gets the same player open, and that player jumps up and takes that shot and doesn't make it, I'm not a better coach than Tony Baldwin. What I could control was getting that kid the shot. That's what I had some control over. So I just hope we, as a system, will keep that at the forefront of our minds and not get locked into the test score, and let's focus on process, and doing the things, and focusing on, what was the lady's name from Oakley?
Ms. Buckner.
He said, "Just look for the positive, don't look for the negative."
I caught that as well.
So I hope that's where we are, and where we'll continue to be.
Yeah.
I think the one thing that Dr. Baldwin has gotten, we don't make knee-jerk reactions based on one year. We look at a pattern over time, and that's when we might have a different conversation. Different grade levels, for different reasons, at different times, different student groups, principals could all tell you the things that impact these scores. Some schools may have had transition of teachers for maternity leaves, teachers moved, lots of different shifts that were not able to be controlled. So when you see a school that might decrease, there's usually a very logical reason. Can we always improve and remember that it is a balance? We, children deserve the very best that we have to offer, and we want to offer that to every child across our system. But they're children, whether they're kindergarten or 12th grade, and we have to remember that. And I think our principals do a magnificent job of remembering that they're children, but we have to ensure that they can read, and they can think like a scientist, and they can do mathematics like a mathematician. And so we're versing them and getting them ready for their, their next journey. But I appreciate those comments.
Definitely. And I also think we need to spend some time celebrating what we do.
Absolutely.
Whether the test score shows it or not, we have excellent instruction going on in our classrooms every day. And we, we need to spend time celebrating that.
And I would challenge the folks that, and I know they're not in this room, but the folks out there in the public, I know the media's not here to help us this evening, but I would challenge the folks that don't think that's going on. Let me know when you'd like to go with me to Johnston Elementary. I'll be happy to take you. Or Irwin High School, or wherever. And I'll take you and show you what's going on. Don't whine and complain if you don't want to help. Don't whine and complain if you don't want to help. But I'll be happy to take anybody, I'll be happy to take anybody from Raleigh. And I know our representatives have done that, but the ones that are making a lot of decisions have not, they haven't been here, I'll be happy to, and I'm sure most of the principals in the room, be happy to show them the same thing. So I'll get off, I'll stop. That's enough.
Thank you.
Can I just add, too, that what I keep hearing in the Reynolds District, and I'm sure this is true across the system, is what we need to focus on in our schools is growth. And because another word for growth is learning, and that's really what the school system is all about. And if we focus on growth, we focus on learning, everything else is going to come along with it. And I keep hearing that over and over and over from the different principals, the different teachers in the schools in the Reynolds District. And I'm proud of us, and that's absolutely where we need to be, what we need to be focusing on. That's our mission, that's why we're here, so.
I agree. Anybody else have a comment or question?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. I don't know if I've ever heard, I think a lot of administrators in there, I don't think we've ever heard it presented as well as it was tonight, with Mr. Bryant. Let me tell you where we are smart. Now, I'm not going to give any credos to the state about how smart that formula is, and you've heard me, and I will continue to my dying breath to fight that formula that says to me that it's 80% one snapshot test, because we all in this room know what that tests. What factors, not excuses, but what factors that play into a one-time, when I walk in at the end of the year and I test our kids. 20% growth. And anyone that has any affiliation with education and learning understands that it's all about the growth. It's where these schools take that child, when they walk in the door, day one, and where are they at the end of the year, the growth? There's a lot of buzzwords in education. I can't keep up with them. I'm getting old enough, I've forgotten half of them, which is probably good. But formative assessment is a buzzword, but it's a critical buzzword, because that's what it's all about. I love the coaching analogy. Because that is what's important as a coach, what you're seeing individually, how you're measuring throughout that season, throughout that practice, for individual student. That's where we're getting smart. And these guys out there, in their PLCs, which is another buzzword, which bottom line means, we're finding time for them to sit down and look at the results of individual students, and then taking those results on a frequent, continuous basis, and determining, how do we continue to grow that child? Not, my gosh, let's, let's, I was going to say, send a prayer up to heaven, I better be careful, that at the end of the year, little Johnny's going to score an X amount of a grade on a test, one-time shot. It's all about that progression all the way through. So we are getting smarter. I just wish that we could get the powers to be, that as you say, place the grades to be, to come into our world and agree that it's all about the progress and the growth. I was a high school principal, if you want to find growth, you pre-test and post-test. You don't try to find some statistical formula that goes back three or four years that's going to tell me where Johnny should be, and then compare him to other Johnnys supposedly in the state. You're absolutely right. It's mind-boggling, and you wouldn't hear it at a college level, or a high school level, or a middle school level. level statistic class. Those professors aren't going to talk about that type of statistics. So I got on my soapbox. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Now it's time for a public comment. I understand we have two?
Yes, ma'am, we have two. And our first is Matthew Snyder of Asheville.
This is for Ms. Little. My name's Matthew Snyder. I've been a math teacher at Buncombe County Middle College for about 10 years. And through that, I've worked with Ms. Little, with Ms. Little. She's been assistant principal that has organized and run Middle College for over 12 years. In two weeks, Ms. Little will be retiring. I want to take a moment to acknowledge your work as assistant principal. Ms. Little has been an active advocate for at-risk youth as an assistant principal. Ms. Little has been an active, and her work at Middle College has been an incredible asset in reducing dropout rates for Buncombe County. Her leadership has helped to guide decision-making in regards to students in even the most trying times. She's helped to make the best decisions possible in order to meet the individual needs of each of our Middle College students. That's an incredible job considering many of our students are dealing with issues relating to mental health, domestic violence, being McKinney-Vento, being mothers and fathers, LGBTQ, and being bullied. Her leadership has helped to graduate students that would otherwise have dropped out and struggled in regular-based schools. As a result of her persistence and dedication, Middle College has consistently had high graduation rates, has increased attendance rates for our individual students, and has increased attendance rates for all, I'm sorry, and has increased student achievement in regards to their grades and testing results. Her guidance has Middle College, has helped to validate Middle College's place as an asset to Buncombe County schools. Most importantly, as stated by our students in letters to Dr. Baldwin, Middle College and Ms. Little has given an opportunity that has changed our students' futures. I wish to, I wish her the best as she embarks on retirement. And acknowledge that the staff at Middle College is committed to her vision, doing whatever it takes to help students succeed. I would also like to acknowledge my concern regarding the importance of Middle College as Ms. Little steps down from her position. Ms. Little's retirement is only a couple short weeks away. The staff and faculty at Middle College have not heard anything in regards to her position. Buncombe County has not posted a position online yet. At Middle College, the staff and faculty, the students know and understand the importance of opportunity that Middle College offers. We hope that Buncombe County Schools also understands that importance. And the major asset that Middle College is to our struggling.
Yes, ma'am. The second public comment is Ricky Hurley of Porter Road.
Good evening, board. My name's Ricky Hurley. I live in the Oakley area. And we, we're aware of the downgrade that we got from the state. But I would like to tell you that as far as the PTO is concerned, I sit on the PTO, go to it regularly. We don't buy that grade. We understand the metrics and we feel like that the growth that we've had was what should be weighed more. We agree, I would agree with you, superintendent, that year to year, your individual child moving up is what's important, not the test. We really like our principal, I have to say that. I hate to say, he has been in a very good relationship. My daughter loves him. Our PTO board loves him. I just want y'all to know that we fully support the staff at Oakley. And we know that this test, that once-a-year grade is not reflected that staff and faculty. That's all, I just wanted to say that to y'all.
Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Fusco, you know, at least you have one friend in the world. The next item on the agenda is our action agenda. And Ms. Frisbee is here. We have the budget in hand. And I told Ms. Frisbee earlier this afternoon that I have read the entire budget, and I'm sure others on here have. No, I did.
You read this?
The words and the numbers?
No, not the numbers, just the words. Thank you. Yes. So are there people on the board that have questions for Ms. Frisbee who walked down from the back? Second time.
I have comments.
That will be fine.
Okay. So I feel like as a board member, it is not my job to nitpick the budget. You go through line by line by line and make this whole very complicated budget work, and I appreciate that very much. And it's my job to, to the extent that is possible, understand the budget.
Absolutely.
And as I was going through this very long document before I slept well, there was just one section that jumped out at me. And I think it jumped out at me as, not, partly as a board member and partly as Cindy McMahon, mom of two kids who graduated from Reynolds High School and whose lives have been significantly changed by the cultural arts, specifically music. And so that PRCA 51, the cultural arts, when I looked at the significant cut that I'm seeing in that budget, it did raise some concerns for me. So the 2016-2017 budget was 182.5, and then we're down this year to 102.5. So if we look at the actuals, it's less of a cut, but from last year's budget to what we budgeted for this year, that's a 44% cut. And so that, again, it's not my job to nitpick. And one small section of this tremendous budget is not enough for me to vote against it. But I just want to say publicly that cultural arts are really, really important. And it's important in terms of the breadth that it offers to our children and, but also research has shown time and time again, the extent to which the cultural arts affect the core programs. And so I just want us to be sure as we're going forward and as we're facing the challenges that are going to come in the next year or so, that we do everything we can to protect those cultural arts. Because I know from personal experience, it changes lives.
Absolutely.
And I absolutely want the kids whose parents cannot afford to pay for the expensive music lessons to still have access to these arts. And so I just wanted to put that out there and have that continue to be something that we focus on as a board and as a school system, to find ways to protect those critical arts programs.
Okay, thank you. I wouldn't have graduated high school if it hadn't been for cultural arts.
There you go.
Probably not college either. Any other comments or questions? Gosh, that was a long way to walk for silence, wasn't it? It's okay. It's all good. Well, I want to thank you for, do you have something, Mr. Bryant? I want to thank you for your work and for doing it in a way that I personally can read and understand. Going through here and seeing those narratives brings home the things that we care about. And I appreciate you being the keeper of those cares.
Yeah, I have to fight my budget team every year because this document is, it's time-consuming to publish, but it's just a wealth of resource, you know, at your fingertips. So they kind of hang their head when I say we got to do it, because we will always do it as long as I'm in this position. So, and they don't know this yet, but I am thinking about submitting our budget document for an award next year. So, because we have a lot of the legwork already done, but don't tell them. Let me break it to them gently. But there is a lot of information here. I'm sorry, what?
Your secret's mine.
Okay. So, but, but it is, I use this book every day. So, and remember, this is the initial budget. As we go through the school year, we can make changes. And duly noted your comments, and we appreciate that, so.
Okay, that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the 1718 budget as presented.
Sub move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, the North Buncombe, thank you, Ms. Frisbee.
Thank you.
The North Buncombe Middle School Approval of Design Contract for Re-roofing. Mr. Fairley's in charge. I would enter, questions from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anka Middle School Field House Renovations Authorization to Award Construction Contract. Mr. Fairley's also in charge. Questions from the board?
I have one, if Mr. Fairley here.
There's another one that always goes to the back row.
I think this is one of them. How did, help me, how did we, how did we put two sets of funding together? Article 40 to 42 and the School Capital Fund Commission, Article $39. Did we have to change something to do this? Or is that the way we set out to do it? We got so many of those projects at the School Capital Fund Commission, I can't keep up with all of them. Was there some?
So the intention was to utilize the insurance money from a major roof leak and partial collapse that we used to repair it. But there was some left that we could do a better renovation, because the repair was really temporary. So that wasn't a whole lot of money. We went to Capital Outlay and they funded what we thought would be the cost when we bid it. It was way over. We went back, redesigned it, actually went back to Capital Outlay again and got more money in line with the bids that are now a year old. They came in high again. We've bid it three times. So the School Capital Fund Commission authorized a pot of money to be utilized for renovations at Anka Middle to accommodate and recognize the change when we took the sixth grade out. So we've been working with Mr. Blankenship to come up with what, you know, there's some changes in this building, what can we do? It's not a whole lot of money. When this bid came in for the third time, still over, discussed it with him, and we put a portion of that money towards this. So that's the story of how the, you know, we're using every resource we can, because the only thing we could do is tear it down. And we'd never be able to rebuild it.
And having to bid it three times is a result of the nature of where we are as an economy right now, the building that's going on here in Buncombe County and around us.
That's right. And if you get more funding, you wait a year and get more funding, it may not be enough. Inflation may outrun you, cost of construction.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Fairley, one other thing, you mentioned inflation, but with the recent catastrophic storms that we've had in the South, I understand that building materials have gone up significantly throughout the country. Are you seeing this? I mean, are we, would we expect any bids that we may let today, we would see that increase applied to those bids?
Well, I'll go back a little bit. For those contractors that bid things and that were under contract, they're going to have to bear the burden of price increases, because they may not be buying their materials for three months. Typically, when something, a catastrophe like that, and there's three of them across the, you know, the area, contractors leave, so you have less people around. Folks, you know, they can go and make maybe more money somewhere else. So you not only, it's not only a material issue. The material issue usually has a lag time of, you know, three to six months. But I imagine this is not going to help future bids.
Thank you.
Fortunately, we've bid most of our big stuff now. We have, we're continually doing things, but the big stuff is out there. And now we're working on our regular Capital Outlay projects with more local contractors, smaller projects at the moment.
Right, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the action agenda is community high school additions and renovations. The, thank you for staying. Approval of the alternate number two to be included in the GMP. And are there questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. I'm appreciative of Mr. Fairley and staff. I'm appreciative to the, I want to make sure I get the letters right, the CMAR for waiving some fees so that we could get this done for community high school and get this put back in. So I'm sure there are a lot of folks that I didn't mention that were involved in this, but I'm thankful that from our last meeting to today, we've been able to have this brought back to us.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve alternate number two for the gym renovation to increase the GMP by $88,632 and a total project cost increase of $111,551 and 16 cents.
Madam Chair, I have one other question. I'm sorry. I know you were looking for a motion, but can I ask my other question?
Wait just a minute. And in this motion, I want to authorize the superintendent to be able to sign this contract.
Okay.
Now you make up.
Okay, now I can ask my question. So I understand we've had to dip into our contingency to do this? So just, you feel good about the contingency that we have left? And that's going to be plenty for this whole project? And we're not endangering anything?
I believe I'm comfortable with it, because you authorized previously the contractor to do some site work. And that was my biggest question and concern at that time. And now he's gotten into it enough and we've found, you know, the buried treasure out there and we've dealt with it. So I'm feeling comfortable that this should be sufficient.
Okay. That was my only concern. All seven of us are going. Thanks.
Thank you. So now I've asked for the motion and read it properly. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'd be happy to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the action agenda is the NCSBA voting delegates. And we have seven people going to the convention in Greensboro, and we have four slots for voting members. I would like to relinquish my, I don't want to be a voting member. So some of the others have, we have to vote on this. So who wants to go down there and be a voting member?
I would be happy to vote.
Okay, that's Cindy.
Unless somebody wants to fight me for it.
Okay. We have three others.
I'll vote.
Thank you.
I'm a, whatever the pleasure the board is.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I've done it before, if there's some others that haven't and would like to.
Others that want to? I think Mr. Bryant wants to, don't you?
That's fine, I'm going to be there.
Okay, and we have an alternate position as well.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. All those in favor of the names that we have called out, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, we now have our voting members. Did she get that out, Ms. Matthews? Very good. The next item on the action agenda is the pool replacement power service easement. And we're going to eventually get a swimming pool that our students can participate in, aren't we?
And they won't get electrocuted.
And because of this easement, as our attorney has said, they will not be electrocuted. And because of this easement, as our attorney has said, they will not be electrocuted. So I have a motion to authorize execution of a construction and maintenance easement to Duke Energy LLC for the purpose of providing electrical power to the new swimming pool on the campus of TC Robertson High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Dr. Baldwin's going to be so happy when we can put that one to rest. The next item on the agenda is the consent. And we have the minutes from September 7, the regular meeting, our personnel report, advisory council request to add members. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Our information agenda is the supplemental information for the 1718 budget. We've already handled that. The announcement of our future meetings. District-wide advisory council meeting is held October 24 at 6:00 p.m. at Anka High School. The Board of Education's regular meeting will be November 9 at 6:30 p.m. here in the Minitorium. I also want to take a second to thank the people, and there are numerous ones, that worked to make the Western District meeting of our School Board Association such a positive event. People from our region were duly impressed, and rightfully so. Ms. Matthews certainly did a wonderful job in that regard. And our TC Robertson High School a cappella chorus did a wonderful job. And my North Buncombe High School Pro Start group did a wonderful job. So wonderful it was. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Thursday night lights.
Who's playing tonight?
Sir.
I'm not going to be, I've got CE class. I get one day here to do it, and it's November the 9th.
Amy asked that we do that, and also because of the report that Tony is asking the staff to bring to us, they needed another week to do that.